...of COVID transmission. I am asking Madison City Schools to embrace HEPA filtration as a strategy to improve air quality. More information on how to do this is in the packet provided in your folders. What does not work, there are other methods that are not recommended and even discouraged by the CDC, EPA, and ASHRAE, such as Foggers and ionization, which is the primary air quality mitigation currently pursued by Madison City Schools. There is distinct absence of an established body of peer-reviewed evidence of effectiveness and safety. I'm asking Madison City Schools to reevaluate the use of ionization in favor of effective HEPA filtration. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next person we have is Tara Bailey.
Good evening, Dr. Nichols and members of the board. On January 31st, we learned that Madison City School is in a misguided effort to improve indoor air quality, installed bipolar ionization systems in Madison Elementary, Horizon Elementary, Midtown Elementary, and Heritage Elementary, with plans to install them in Liberty Middle, Columbia Elementary, Rainbow Elementary, and Journey Middle. We were informed that Madison City School staff have been pursuing ionization since 2018. Our intent here is not to attack or place blame. Instead, we feel it is necessary to be both respectful and honest, and so we will. Based on a growing number of expert opinions in the fields of chemistry, indoor air, children's health, engineering, and more, it is concerning that bipolar ionization systems installed in these Madison City Schools may present a health risk to our schools and children. Ionization does not coincide with the recommendations by any authoritative or expert body we have encountered. In a study conducted by Boeing here in their Huntsville Laboratories, they concluded, and I quote, "Ionization has not shown significant disinfection effectiveness." Furthermore, the concerns of the prominent ASHRAE Epidemic Task Force members are that ionization can create byproducts that may be harmful to human health. Lastly, we fear that subjecting students to 12 years of exposure, putting ions in contact with their lung tissue for six hours a day, may eventually be looked back upon as unconsenting human subjects' research, in the event that ions are as harmful to lung tissue as ozone has been found to be. CDC, EPA, and ASHRAE have put it politely, saying there is an absence of an established body of peer-reviewed evidence showing proven efficacy and safety under an as-used conditions. The LANTIC COVID-19 Commission indicates that ionization has unproven efficacy and has a potential for degrading the quality of the air through the generation of harmful secondary pollutants. Notably, the LANTIC Commission said the same thing for Foggers, which we believe Madison City Schools may also have used. Because of the ineffectiveness, one vendor, Global Plasma Solutions, whose products are installed in our schools, is being sued and may be subject to false claims. We've mentioned our concerns over bipolar ionization in an email where we compiled a large list of articles we found about this subject. Our schools should not be putting unproven technology into our classrooms and should instead focus on proven, recommended methods to improve indoor air quality through increasing ventilation and adding HEPA filtration. Money is not only available through the remaining Esser dollars, but also through additional grants being offered through the Department of Agriculture, Department of Energy, and the Department of Treasury. There is also a surplus of $9.7 billion in Alabama's Education Trust Fund, with two months left in the fiscal year. I am requesting that our school district work with local elected leaders to utilize these funds to further improve indoor air quality in our schools. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi.
Hello.
Ready to go.
Oh, yes, sir.
I promised to bring a little ray of sunshine while I'm speaking about air quality, but I'm wearing this mask because my daughter has two comorbidities that prevent her from attending school safely, and I just want to make sure we don't test those out and find out how bad they are for her. That's why I'm wearing this. But, Dr. Nichols, I want to acknowledge that I admire and respect that you feel called upon to support transplanted parents who don't have families around to support them by keeping kids in class. I resemble that. That's me. But in my case, my child hasn't seen the inside of a Madison City Schools classroom because of those comorbidities. But in Georgia, schools that implemented both ventilation improvements and added HEPA filtration saw 48% fewer COVID cases, which I think would have a pretty big impact on attendance and teacher shortages. And so, while I don't want to test my child's comorbidities, and you don't want kids to be out of the classroom, I think that our incentives may meet. I'm aware of other parents who won't speak about their children's comorbidities as a matter of privacy, and I respect that, but I'm here to tell you that we're not alone in those unmet needs. I also, aside from acknowledging that you're trying to keep kids in school, which I understand and respect, I also want to acknowledge that Mr. Jones answered some of our questions with regard to school indoor air quality, and I'm thankful for that. We haven't had time to review all the answers, but we're very interested in seeing a continuation of the direction toward monitoring the air quality and making sure that that information is publicly available. In Boston and Denver, we know of systems that monitor classroom conditions and make the readings available in real time to anybody on the internet. And I know that transparency like that can be a bit of a fearful topic, but I think that that kind of transparency is what's necessary for us to establish that children's basic needs to breathe safe air are being met. Getting back to normal won't happen without that. I also want to close in saying, you know, in September, we built a monument to teachers who passed away from COVID, and we were experiencing a teacher shortage. And in response to that, in the 2022 to 23 school year, Alabama did lower some standards, I understand, and increased the pay for some teachers. And at some point, I fear we're going to bounce off the bottom of the standards and the top of the pay bracket and still not have teachers to step in. And at that point, we may have the National Guard instructing our students, as happened in New Mexico. And I just wonder why, why not for our kids? Why not do the ventilation HEPA filtration that worked in our neighboring states and that have been shown to reduce the transmission by 82.5% if you pursue the right key parameters? I think these proven mitigations could keep kids in schools. I know you want that. I want that very badly. I want my kid to be in your school, so that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Board. I'm here on behalf of Bob Jones and, more specifically, a recycling effort at Bob Jones. We haven't had recycling for a few years now, with the Recycling Alliance of North Alabama stepping in in place of past companies. We haven't had recycling at Bob Jones as we have in the past. And so, I've kind of been working with some student-led organizations and with Ms. Sylvia Lambert at Bob Jones High School to get us back on track with this. I've been on the phone with Raina a little bit, calling back and forth about the possibility of, sorry, getting recycling back at Bob Jones, but they don't pick up for schools or businesses. And so, I was kind of looking a bit wider into Huntsville areas and just anywhere around that would maybe pick up recycling. And we found the Ark of Madison. They are willing to pick up Madison, or they're willing to process our recyclable material, specifically paper and aluminum. And we have been, of course, repeatedly hitting roadblocks with places locally here that will not process it, which is especially a bit weird because of how booming Madison is and Huntsville and how we are projected to be much larger. You mean, you've seen Cliff Farm, you've seen Hughes Road. I don't think any of us here love driving along Hughes Road, and I think it's kind of characteristic of that. But if we can just get a little bit of funding to place bins in schools and kind of raise awareness for this, that is all I'm here to say. Yeah, thank you guys for your time so much.
Thank you.
You said you're trying to look at recycling paper and aluminum, like aluminum cans and paper?
Yes, sir, in schools.
Thank you to our speakers tonight. That concludes our public comments time, and we will move into business action items. Dr. Nichols?
Mr. President, members of the Board, I present to you and recommend the consent agenda, and it contains several items: A, Minutes 22-19 of August the 5th; B, an agreement by and between the City of Madison Board of Education, the Enrichment Center for Services for the 22-23 school year; several field trips; C, a field trip for the Liberty Middle School cheerleaders to Orlando; D, a field trip for the Liberty Middle School Robotics Team to La Grange, Georgia; E, a field trip for the Bob Jones High School Health Occupations to attend the Leadership Conference in Washington; and F, a request for Bob Jones High School Volleyball Team to compete in Chattanooga; and G, a field trip request for James Clements Cross Country Team to attend a meet in Georgia; H, a 22-23 salary schedule update; I, a bid 2022-10 for instructional software for Kami; J, an owner and architect agreement by and between the City Board of Education and Nola Van Pearson to begin the process to look at design of a new elementary school; and K, rate increase for legal services for Lanier Ford and Payne PC.
Board, the superintendent recommends approval of the consent agenda items A through K. Can I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Newberry and a second by Mr. Hulsey. All those in favor of the consent agenda items A through K, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Consent agenda passes. Dr. Nichols?
Mr. President, members of the Board, I recommend for approval of bid 2022-06, vending and concessions from Buffalo Rock Pepsi Company. They were the only responsive bidder. Specifications are for one year for items for our concessions and vending.
Board, the superintendent recommends approval of bid number 2022. Can I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Hulsey and a second by Mr. Newberry. Discussion?
Mr. President, members of the Board, the bidding of this information is pretty standard for our concessions that we had. Buffalo Rock was the only person we did reach out to Coca-Cola. They did not have an interest in bidding. One change would be that for historically, for many years, Buffalo Rock and other Pepsi distributors in the area have taken care of vending ice machines and scoreboards for school districts. Beginning several years ago, starting in the county system and then through Huntsville, they began to get out of the scoreboard business. So we are probably the last of the group that has been in that contract. So as our contract came up, they did inform us that they no longer will handle the replacement for vending ice and scoreboards. So we will have to take that on as a district. Mr. Terrell has been meeting with our athletic folks to talk about sponsorships as we update scoreboards, including sponsorships on those to take care of the cost of scoreboards. So this, this contract is that different in previous years due to their change in, in providing equipment.
The, the commission that's listed, does that come to the district or to the schools? Or is this, is this a district-wide bid?
Mr. Terrell, I would assume it goes to the schools as they use them in their specific concession stands and vending product.
Yes, vending, commission will go back to the schools, they will check, and then as they buy their concessions, you know, that's where they'll keep that as far as to their program on activity.
Board, any comments? I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Motion passes. Dr. Nichols?
Mr. President, members of the Board, I recommend for your approval of the amendment to the 2022-2023 school year calendar.
Board, the superintendent recommends amending the 2022-2023 school year calendar. Can I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Cummings and a second by Mr. Newberry. Dr. Nichols?
Mr. President, members of the Board, on the 22-23 calendar, as the Board recalls, last year throughout the year, there were several changes, but most of those are driven by state testing that we have and then having to alter schedules at our high schools to adjust to that. That's mainly what we're doing here. We're just trying to put those in now instead of bringing them piecemeal through the year. You have an SAT for our, for all 10th and 11th graders, and therefore, we would inject an e-learning day for 9th and 12th graders with a half-day collaborative. The requirements to give these tests, such as the pre-ACT on the 19th and the ACT on April the 11th, they take so many staff and with accommodations for testing that it really, we would end up just housing students in large numbers in the auditorium and gymnasium if we didn't have those days. We did this last year, and so we just felt like we wanted to put those revisions in now and not piecemeal them as we came in. We did make a change that there's an e-learning day on the 15th. If you, if you go back on the 15th, and I think next year's calendar, when we bring it up, is the 20th, is graduation. Both of our high schools graduate. One starts at 2 o'clock, I think, and the other one starts at 5 or 6. We have practices that morning due to the Von Braun. We have staff and teachers that have to be let go, and again, we have to let classes out. And graduation is a really interactive activity across the whole district. Older siblings are graduating, and so we just felt like if we could have that day in this calendar, that might help us. It's been historically a huge day of substitute teachers in the district, and so we're just trying to coordinate all those activities in one day. And then the only other change to that would be adding the Juneteenth holiday on the 19th. That's a federal holiday now. We observe all federal holidays, and so we add that holiday. That only affects our 240 summer employees. So those are the revisions to the 22-23 calendar.
So the, so we're, we're not changing any, any dates of, we're amending dates where testing is going on for this, for the 22-23.
Yes.
And let's see, I was just looking at the, on my copy here.
And then we did add a collaborative half-day on the 12th for all students and the e-learning day on the 15th.
On the 12th of?
October.
Yes, yes, okay, I see that, I see that. And the April, the April 11th date, I noticed you used some, some shading on that October 12th and on the, some of these other dates, like the 15th day, that's an e-learning day. I don't see, at least on my copy, and it could just be the colors here, I can't see any difference on the calendar in April. Could we, could we change that shade a little bit, or if there is a difference there?
Yes, sir, Ms. White's back there.
Before we publish it?
She'll probably have it done before we leave.
Good, no, I, I know the, the end of, the end of the year and the graduation is a, is a hectic time, and I can, I can see, see wanting to free up a lot of the staff because the staff, much of the staff is, is at the Civic Center, as, as the Board knows, is that they've been at the Civic Center with that, with their staff. And let's see.
And I will say, our staff, Mr. Hope Camp, tried to consolidate as many of these, of these that we could, but we're bound on these testing dates by the state, and there's windows. And so, we couldn't move beyond our windows. In fact, I think that one of these dates, we're out for fall break, and the date we're using for the PSAT is the second makeup date, and that's a national date. And so, we don't really get a lot of wiggle room on our side to do that. And I'd love to be able to sit here and tell you the next calendar, we have all those ready to go, but the state hadn't put out their testing calendar yet. So as soon as they do, then we'll have to revise the calendar. But we just felt like we'd like to get all the revisions done now. Last year, I think we brought them in two or three piecemeals, and we'd like to just get them all taken care of.
Well, and I know we always, you know, Madison City and, and I, I thank, thank the staff for working with the other districts to, to better align our calendars, to help those families that work across the districts. But I know in Madison City, we've always looked at the academics first, and we've, we have a lot of nine-week classes, and we've tried to, tried to balance when those breaks are. I say all that to say, we have worked many times around that PSAT. You know, we have a, a good federal-sized federal workforce here. They always point out, well, we have Columbus Day off, why can't we take that? And typically, I think the first PSAT date is the week of Columbus Day. And so, so having fall break the week before that perfectly aligns with our nine-week schedule, and it kept us previously from the first testing date, allowing us to have the second testing date, but it, the luck didn't go with us this time, I take it.
Correct, and also the work piece that, the original work piece day, which is the week of fall break, we will have to do in November. I think it's been the work set out, but there are, we're gonna have to do makeup for the
Anything else, Board? All those in favor of amending the 2022-2023 school calendar as you have before you, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Motion passes. Dr. Nichols?
Mr. President, members of the Board, I recommend for approval of the 23-24 school year calendar.
Board, the superintendent recommends approval of the 2023-2024 school year calendar. Can I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Cummings and a second by Mr. Newberry. Dr. Nichols?
Mr. President, members of the Board, the 23-24 calendar pretty much lines up, other than, of course, the dates we'll have to come back and revise due to testing, like the calendar we've had before. We do have a half collaborative day, two in the fall and one in the spring, and we hope that by coordinating those, we have less pulling out teachers for, for professional development, that we can align most of those in the collaborative days, thereby cutting down folks being out. We've also front-loaded, you know, our professional development days. As the Board knows, some of our teachers, we've even brought in early before those to cover work that needs to be done on IEPs and, and other areas, so that they're there for those professional development days. We do have on the 20th of May, a No School Day, that is graduation, so we were ready to put that in place and balance the other days so that we can just not have school, it won't be an e-learning day. And so, we feel very good about the work. Ms. White has worked on this calendar. She's had input from parents, and she's had input from staff members, and, you know, everybody always asks why we start so early. I guess that's the million-dollar question, you know? We don't have to, as my former boss used to say, there are 187 days in the calendar. We just had to figure out where everybody wants to put them. And, you know, if we didn't have a whole week at fall break and a whole week at Thanksgiving and two, at least two weekends at Christmas and a spring break, we could start four weeks later. But I, so far, we haven't, nobody's really jumped on that bandwagon, so I don't know. Although I think by the time we get to about the third week of July, parents may be ready for kids to go back to school. I don't know. Mine's ready to go back to school. But we try to balance all of those out and, and work them around the nine-week grading periods, as you said, and try to balance, try to balance those as well. So I just appreciate our staff working on this calendar.
It sounds, seems like Ms. White's still back there working, she.
Well, I'm just trying to make sure that the 20th of May, the 24th, would also be an e-learning and not a tech.
Right.
That's what we're doing, and I think I got that covered.
Excellent. Dr. Nichols, did you say that the spring and fall break dates do align with Madison County, Huntsville City?
Yes, Madison, Madison County, we have their calendar. We align, of course, with them in Huntsville this year. Huntsville is, has a rough draft, but the rough draft they have aligns those spring breaks and, and dates. So far, they haven't approved it yet. They're, I think they're kind of waiting on us, and so we've kind of talked amongst ourselves and aligned those, those big breaks.
I know, as Mr. Hope Camp alluded to, we first and foremost need to focus on our academic needs first, and I've always maintained, we need to do what's best for our students first. But when we can make things like this align, I think it's a good win for everybody, since we do have so many teachers, parents, and who may work in one school system and have students here and vice versa, or family members, you know, spouses, so I do think it's good to make, make that happen.
And I, and I notice when comparing that draft in the Madison County, we're somewhat unique in our graduation being where it is. And I guess that's frankly just because we all share a venue. Is that how that works out? And, and so, we're kind of at the front of the line, which isn't bad for us. I mean, I think, I think our seniors greatly appreciate being at the front of the line, but that causes a scheduling issue with all of our other teachers and students and family members.
We kind of came to that party after they had already started doing the party, and so we kind of got front-loaded on the graduation dates. None of the seniors have complained.
Yeah.
Okay? So I'll just tell you that upfront, and, and I, you know, I used to load my bandbuses, and seniors got to load first, and I would always tell the freshmen, if you don't like this, we'll change it when you're a senior, and nobody ever told me to change. No ninth grader has told me they want us to move it. However, I do know that some of the other districts graduate in June, and they've been out of school for a week, and they're, you know, that's a challenge in its own self, you know? So, but we, we like the date we have, and, and we like, we're gonna hang on to it.
Yeah, yeah, I agree. Anything else, Board? I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Motion passes. Dr. Nichols?
Mr. President, members of the Board, I would ask Ms. Williams to come at this time and present the financial and bank reconciliation statements for June 2022.
Good evening, Board and Dr. Nichols. For June 2022, we should be at 75%. As far as our total revenues, we are at 75.73%, and our revenues, I'm sorry, the expenditures are at 63.64%.
Is that the financials and the bank reconciliation? Both?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. President, members of the Board, I recommend for your approval of the June 2022 financial and bank reconciliation statements from Madison City Schools, as presented by Ms. Williams.
Board, the superintendent recommends approval of the June 2022 financial and bank reconciliation statements. Can I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Cummings and a second by Mr. Hulsey.
You know, we had financial, finance committee meeting prior to this meeting, and, you know, we, we were pleased to see still solid financial growth as we entered into the latter part of the fiscal year. We got some, some news on our, our number of students. What was our number of students again that we have as of the, the numbers you gave today?
Well, counting pre-K, we're right at 12,400.
And then, of course, we used to have our funding from prior year, which is less than that, so there's a discrepancy there. So we continue to balance that, that discrepancy, but our team is doing it very well, and we continue to demonstrate, you know, just solid financial management skills. So good job, everyone in the finance department.
Thank you.
Absolutely, I second that. Revenue growth, as, as anyone who's followed this has, has noted, has, has been strong. And, and even, even throughout COVID and through this economic downturn, our, our local revenue growth has been strong. What's also been strong is our growth and our, our increase in costs and our capital improvement plans that, that we are putting in place. And so, so it is, it is certainly a job by our CSFO and the, and the finance department to, to balance all of that and, and keep us at, working these current, these current issues while they're also putting together a, a budget for us for the 23, the fiscal 23 year that's, that's, that's looming now. And I just want to thank you for all the work you put in and educating us on the process as we go through this.
No problem.
Anything further, Board? Call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Motion passes. Dr. Nichols?
Mr. President, members of the Board, I recommend for your approval of this substitute for Madison City Schools.
Board, the superintendent recommends approval of the list of substitutes for Madison City Schools. Can I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Newberry and a second by Mr. Hulsey. Any discussion?
Thank you, Dr. John Staff, for continuing to expand our substitute list. I will say, this one has a transportation substitute on there, which is not common for most of our substitute list. You can't just, you can't just walk in and substitute as a bus driver, okay? It doesn't work that way. And so, we're, we appreciate Dr. Scripshire and his staff because they work with retired folks and try to get them to come back and sub and, and we run, to help us make sure we run those 404 routes a day, so.
Excellent. There's nothing further, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Any opposed? Any abstain? Motion passes. Dr. Nichols?
Mr. President, members of the board, I recommend for your approval of Team's contract for Madison City Schools.
Board, the superintendent recommends approval of a Team's contract with Madison City Schools. Can I have a motion and a second?
So move.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Cummings and a second by Mr. Halsey. Any discussion?
Just a reminder to the board, the Team's contracts work through the state. We meet the requirements to extend the salaries for those folks who are in the math and science field that meet the requirements of the teaching load, as you can see. These have to be approved by the state, and then Dr. John and her staff work on those. And so we have to get verification of experience for someone new, as well as verification of the schedule that meets the requirements of of the code.
Nothing further. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Motion passes. Dr. Nichols?
Mr. President, members of the board, I recommend for your approval of supplemental contracts for work performed for Madison City Schools.
Board, the superintendent, I was trying to pull that up. The superintendent recommends approval of the supplemental contracts that you have before you. Can these be taken as a group?
Group is fine.
Seeing that a group is fine, can I have a motion and a second?
So moved. Second.
A motion by Mr. Halsey and a second by Mr. Cummings. Any discussion, Board?
Pretty standard, Mr. Mr. President, members of the board, finalizing our supplements for athletics. There were a few of remaining professional developments that we need to approve. We also had some lead bus driver supplements and gate workers otherwise after schools, some after school tutoring. Pretty standard for our supplements for this time of year.
That's good. Any further discussion, Board? I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Motion passes. Dr. Nichols?
Mr. President, members of the board, I recommend for your approval of the remainder of the personnel actions as presented to you.
Board, the superintendent recommends approval of the personnel actions you have before you. Can these be taken as a group? The group being fine, can I have a motion and a second?
So move.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Newberry and a second by Mr. Cummings. Any discussion? I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Motion passes. Dr. Nichols, are there any personnel actions that you'd like to call attention to at this time?
No, sir, Mr. Mr. President.
Excellent. This time, then, we will move into superintendent comments.
First of all, let me thank Sam Scott for being with us tonight. Mr. Scott's our SRO at Discovery. Appreciate Sam. Does a great job, is always out in the building, walking around, interacting with kids. And also see him sometimes out there in front of the Trash Panda Stadium. I don't know. I don't know, Sam, I don't stand out there with all those cars going by. I'm worrying about you, so I don't want anybody to mess you up. You're too valuable to us, but we appreciate Sam and our SROs. We did add an SRO this year. That gives us 10, and we're looking to add a few more as, as the city can release them and they meet the standard. We'd like to have one in every elementary school on a daily basis. So we've got the funding and we've requested that, and that's just a matter of timing for them to to have them ready to become part of our SRO team. Also, several announcements. I was glad to be part of the Madison Chamber luncheon today. Update on, on, gave an update on the school district. We, as we said earlier, we're at almost 12,400 in students pre-K. We started the year, I think, about 11,920. We've added another 300 plus here in the last two and a half weeks, which is not unusual. We will probably add another 200 to 300 before the end of May. So that does cost us a little bit. Ms. Williams updated us on that. If we, if we, right now, currently, I think, from what we're funded by the state, which was about 11,800 last year, we're, we're gonna have to pay, if we get to 12,200, about a million three out of local funds to cover those incurred costs that the state will not pick up. Now, that's, that's the bad news. The good news is that number could have been years ago, 2 and 1/2 million dollars. So I have to give the state some credit where it's due, that the new formula does give us a little bit better. They, they talk like it fully funds you, and it does not, but but it is helpful in some ways to do that. And so I certainly appreciate our team. We spent a lot of time in the summer calculating as we, as White left, but our curriculum and our staffing team and HR and our finance department. We spent a lot of time evaluating growth in the city and where that's happening and the number of kids that are in neighborhoods. And and so far, that we have been right on target with most of our units. And that, that's really a good thing. I don't think we've had to move or shuffle a unit around right now, which is unusual. I'm not sure I remember a time in my career where that happened, so I do want to say to our team what a great job they they did forecasting that and looking at that. I also want to thank the Madison Chamber and the Madison Visionary Partners. They're doing a program called Snacks for Success. You can donate money and we will, they will provide snacks to the schools to help kids. We have, you know, we're a blessed community, but we do have about 22% of our kids that are below the poverty level, and and there's a lot of challenges there, and they reached out to help us do that. And so I certainly appreciate their help. Also, on the consent agenda, we renewed our contract with the Enrichment Center, and I'm very glad about that. And I'm also glad that we were able to increase the amount of funding we were, were working with them on so that we could add additional days of Tier Three counselors to the middle school and elementary school. We have it five days a week. And so, of course, if they have a situation where they think the enrichment center counselor needs to be involved, they contact the parent, and it's totally between the parent wanting to utilize that service. We, we don't force that service on them. And if they want to, then we have those services available. And of course, we also provide those mental health counseling services free of charge for our staff. And we did a survey, I think in the spring, that around 90% of our staff were aware of those services that we provide. So I certainly appreciate the work that's going on there. Dr. John will be giving us a report in a few weeks on, on the hiring. We are, we have been really blessed this year. And I keep seeing the news about struggles and and folks that don't have staff in place, and we have been able to have the staff in place. And looking through the application process, some jobs have had 90 to 100 applicants for those teaching positions. I would say the biggest challenging jobs we have right now with staffing are support positions. And so finding, finding child nutrition staff and custodial staff and bus driver staff has been far more challenging than filling our teaching positions. I think, first of all, that's due to the fact that you as a board and our team work together to give our salary increases across the board to our staff that that I think were, were important to give and and well deserved. But we also, at that time, as you'll remember, were able to increase the steps for a lot of our salaries and get them equal up to 15 for our cert, non-certified employees. And so I think that, in the long run, will help us to find staff and have those in all of our positions. But I can't, I can't say right now, Dr. John, you can correct me, but I think we were in really good shape going into the school year. First of all, we had a job fair early in the spring. We had a lot of interest in that. Our principals and administrators interviewed and central office staff early on. And when we got ready to start the school year, we didn't, we didn't see what other districts may have seen and had short. So I applaud our staff for doing that. Also, I would just like to say, because some folks may see a difference in this, we now bring out of state field trips to you as a board. There were several on here tonight. That's something I've always done and felt like that when, when we have students travel out of state, that it's, it's much better for us to bring that to you as the board because of the liability of travel. It also gives us, Mr. Terrell and I look at those requests and make sure that, that the insurances are there and the transportation mode and any of those types of questions that we may have. And so we just felt like it was a good process in place to add those and bring those to you. So if someone saw that, that would probably be the reason. I will say that I'm very excited about Russell Johnson and Rachel Gibbs have taken the superintendent, as Mr. Peck likes to say, a guy that's wore many hats. Now I'm a podcaster. So I never, I don't know if I ever planned on that as a career move. But but we felt like we wanted to, one of our strategic goals and initiatives was to expand ways to expose our community to what is happening maybe at a deeper level in our schools. We had our first podcast last week, and we highlighted Keith Anderson and Lee Thomas, the band directors at Bob Jones and James Clemmons, about when you see the band out there marching around, what really goes into that? I know, I've been out there, and some of you may know, but a lot of folks don't, and they may just think they show up and do that. I remember one time that the Tennessee band was marching and the head of ABC, that's back when they showed the halftime shows, ABC tapped our band director on the shoulder in the middle of the show and said, could you extend this show another minute? We need another minute of airtime. Well, band shows don't really work that way. And so, you know, we just wanted to give, this week, we're gonna talk to two of our teachers of the year. So we're gonna, we brought them in, Bonnie Howard and Sergeant Clark, and we're gonna talk to them about their programs and what media specialists do and ROTC. And so every two weeks, we'll have different guests to come in and highlight programs that are going on. So I thank Russell and and Rachel for that. I do appreciate those that came. I know the young man came and talked about recycling, believe it or not. In 1974, I was the president of the Ecology Club at Maryville Junior High School. That just dated myself, didn't it? And we had a paper drive. No, uh-uh. And we had a paper drive. I organized the recycling of paper. And we'll certainly reach out to Ms. Lambert and see what we can do to, to assist in, in, in that effort that you've got going forward. And appreciate, appreciate your thought on that, and we'll get with you here. I also appreciate those that came and talked about our air quality. We will share this information with our consultants that we have. We feel good about that we, you know, our first and foremost, we always must meet the Department of Construction and Management standards of Alabama. They have standards on the equipment that we use and the air quality and what they expect of us. And so we, we would have to meet those, and we do meet those standards. Now, their standards are, are Alabamas. They're not Georgias or their Californias or anybody else's. They're Alabamas. And so we, but we meet those, and of course, we will ask for their guidance in reviewing anything we have. We are looking at filters. Mr. Jones has been looking at that and what that effect would have on the dampers that we have and how that would be affected if we changed those. And I do know that we do meet certain standards like UL 867 standard and further the UL 2998 standards of verified zero ozone. Our systems meet that. And I am concerned, I agree with the gentleman that said about keeping kids in school. We want them in school. And I will say that so far, we've been blessed the first few weeks, even though there's been illness reported around. We are less than 4% absence on an average over the first probably 12 days of school. That's pretty low for a school district. To keep that at 4%, we'd like it to be 2%. But we will take that information and share it with Mr. Echols, and Dr. and Mr. Jones will work on that and see what suggestions they have in the future that we might look at as far as air quality. I think that's all I have.
Excellent. Thank you, Dr. Nichols. We'll start at your end of the table, Mr. Newberry.
Like always. So first, I want to congratulate again the Scholars Bowl team, Mr. Hill from, from Discovery. Congratulations to them. I tried Scholars Bowl. I, you would not want to build a team around me, so yeah. And the, I don't have too much to say tonight, other than, you know, last time we met, I, I said how much work it is to to get schools started. And now, and we're two and a half weeks in, and, you know, it takes a lot of work to get it started. It takes a lot of work to keep it going and running smoothly, and it seems to be doing that. My kids are loving it. And things seem to be going really well. So kudos to everybody who makes that happen.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Newberry. Mr. Halsey?
Thank you again to Officer Scott for being here tonight and taking care of us. Congratulations again to the Scholars Bowl team from Liberty. Great job on their performance there. And thank you again to our everyone who came to speak tonight. Appreciate hearing your input and your thoughts. This start of the school year has been kind of odd for me. For the first time in six years, I don't have a student in Madison City Schools right now. Some of you, most people have probably heard, but if not, I've been afforded a very unique career opportunity. It's gonna be very good, but it has required us to move back to Birmingham, where we came here from six years ago. So my wife and youngest daughter have actually been back down in Birmingham the past couple of weeks, starting school. My wife teaching and my daughter in school there. And so it's been kind of an odd situation for me. But we're, we're bitters, we have mixed feelings, bittersweet feelings about it. You know, we know it's a great opportunity for our family, but we certainly have come to love Madison City and Madison City Schools. And we valued our time here, and it's been a great experience. I'll be serving out my, rest of my, well, fulfill my term, but I'll be leaving the board as of next week. So I'll have one more board meeting, and I'll, I'll, I'll share some final thoughts then. But until then, I just want to appreciate all the support everyone has given me as a board member. And I certainly appreciate everyone who's a part of Madison City Schools, you know, every employee, every teacher. Just thank you all for all that you do, and it's, it's absolutely been an honor to be a part of such a great system. So I'll, I'll, I guess I'll share more next week.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Halsey. Mr. Cummings?
I just want to say, wonderful, another wonderful day in Madison. Congratulations, Mr. Hill, on the Scholars Bowl. That's a big honor for Discovery. Another opportunity for winning under Discovery's belt. Mr. Parks White, I appreciate you for coming and speaking about recycling. I love it when our students come and speak to the board. It just shows how socially aware they are and and take the initiative to to take on new tasks. And, you know, wish you well in in your goals. And if there's anything we can do at the board level, please let us know. Dr. Nichols has already spoke on, he was the president of recycling back in the day, so you.
Thank you for the day.
So I know you work with Ms. Lambert. I'm sure you guys will come together and and pull off some, some great things to help work around some of the obstacles, obstacles that you guys mentioned that you're facing with recycling companies around in the area. But I know that you can put your mind to it and and put together a team and and be successful in your request, okay? I think that's it.
You sure?
It seemed like it was something, oh, the air filter. I wanted to speak to that. You know, we had some conversation on air filters when COVID first came. I mean, so just know that the board and the superintendent, you know, main goal is what is the best thing we can do for the system and the schools? So I know that ionization came up, and, you know, when we talked to our engineer, you know, it's, seemed like that was one of the the better routes to go. I'm sure you guys have other information, but like Dr. Nichols said, we'd be happy to to look at that, and I'm sure he's gonna come up with some, some, some solutions or some pros and cons on which direction we should go. I do know that, I remember there was some conversation on the thicker the helper filter, but I think, I'm gonna come back a little bit. We already use a higher quality air filter than regular, correct?
We can still increase that, but that's what we gotta look at. Mr. Jones has that looking at. Those filters being increased.
But some of the age of our air conditioning units may prohibit that.
Some of them will.
Okay, got it.
And we have to balance what that intake of air is gonna be and then what the effect would be. And he's looking at that currently with Mr. Echols.
Got it. Well, thank you.
To follow up on that, I, I do, do appreciate the information and the, and the public comments. And I, I do know Dr. Nichols has shared with us that, that he has contacted Mr. Echols, and and they are looking at, 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 at the possibility of adding in stronger filtration and and what then that air turnover may need to be and and what, what other secondary and tertiary effects that may have on the systems. And so I appreciate, appreciate, appreciate you educating us, and I appreciate Dr. Nichols already tasking to look into that. As you can tell by my address tonight, I'm ready to go to the football game tonight. It's an exciting time of the year when fall sports kick off. And and it's, you know, it's not just football. There's, there's lots of other sports going on, but, but we, I'd like to say we strategically scheduled this meeting so we can just walk right across the parking lot. Whether we did or we didn't, that's what we're, that's what, that's what some of us are gonna do. And so I just want to, want to wish all of our student athletes and and their, and the coaches and families best of luck this fall season and and all the, all the endeavors of Madison City Schools. I don't believe I have anything for. I don't believe I have anything further. Our next school board meeting will be, will also contain the first budget hearing. The state of Alabama requires school systems to provide two budget hearings at, at regularly called meetings. And so August 25th, 2022, at 5:00 PM in this board, board room, we will have our next school board meeting, and in that will be the first budget hearing. And Ms. Williams, the budget you will then post online and you'll have forms here for any feedback, and I guess forms online also for requesting any feedback from the citizens. All right. There's nothing further? I'll take a motion and a second to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Halsey and a second by Mr. Newberry.